I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown Ohio Regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. Clerk of Counsel, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mr. Lally.
Present.
Mrs. Carter.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slankka.
Here. Thank you. We have two public hearings on the agenda this evening. The applicant for the second public hearing regarding the Cristo Homes incentive district Tiff wishes to cancel the public hearing tonight and start the process over. Is there a motion to remove the second public hearing from the agenda this evening?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Yes's have and the motion passes. The public hearing tonight regards Middletown's Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. Assistant Law Director Brody Conover, you have the floor for the swearing in.
Great. So tonight, we're going to have the hearing for the CDBG grants. Anyone that is going to be speaking tonight, either in favor and oppose, any other comments, I'm going to have you go ahead and stand and raise your right hand. Anyone?
Does that include the applicant?
Yeah, I guess. Go ahead. Yeah, sorry. We'll go ahead and have you up. So do you swear the testimony that you're going to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, hoping God? Great. Thank you. It's all yours, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we would like to start with the staff report. And who will be presenting that? Would be Mindy Mueller? All right, Mindy Mueller, thank you. And you're welcome to either stand or sit, however you like.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to walk through a little bit of the review of CDBG. So we have a clear picture of what that is and then talk through the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. Go ahead, next slide, please. The city receives an annual allocation of funds from HUD, and these funds are used to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and affordable housing. Next slide, please. Middletown is what they call an entitlement community, which means there's a formula allocation that is given by HUD, and you get that formula allocation each year. CDBG is used for a wide range of community development needs. The estimate we're using for the 2526 award is 709824. We do not have that final allocation yet, but that is the number we're using for this process. Next slide, please. There are several requirements for community development block grant funds. There are three national objectives, and the grant has to meet these national objectives, the funds that are used. Number one is to benefit low to moderate income households. Second national objective is the prevention of slums or blight. And the third is an urgent community need, which is actually designated by the federal government as urgent need, not what we would consider urgent needs. What the city has done in the past is spent 100% of its funds on benefiting low and moderate income persons in our community. And it also has to be used for eligible spending activities. Next slide, please. There are lots of requirements with these funds. Some that I want to point out is there is a 15% cap on public services. That means support services that would be provided through nonprofit organizations are limited as to how much of the funds can go for that. No more than 15% of what is allocated. There's a 20% cap on planning administration to run the program, and not less than 70% of the spending has to benefit low and moderate income persons. So right now, we are in the midst of a planning process for CDBG funds. Every five years, we have to do what they call a consolidated plan or a con plan in HUD lingo. And then we also do an annual action plan. And so the five-year plan outlines what the priorities are that the city's going to focus on for the next five years. And then the annual action plan is what are we going to do over the next year with the funds specifically. So right now, we're in the middle of the consolidated planning process, and we're going to consider both the con plan and the annual action plan. The annual action plan starts May 1 of '25 and runs through April 30th of '26. So moving on with some of the planning process, it's quite an extensive process when we do the five-year plan to identify what the priority needs are in the community. And so we did a number of things to reach the plan that you have been presented a draft of to determine what the community needs are. We did meetings with community stakeholders. We also did a community survey that went out to residents, people who work in Middletown, as well as other stakeholders in the city. And then we also looked at community level data, so just some raw data that speaks to the need in the city. And then we outline those presenting priorities. So looking at all of that information, what's presenting as the highest need to guide the work over the next five years. In that planning process, we also identify activities or projects that would help address those priority needs. And there's a number of ways that happens. One of the things that the city has done in recent years is put out a request for proposal to give nonprofits an opportunity to get some of these funds to help the city address its needs. So there's an RFP process that I'll walk through in more detail here in a minute. There also are city-led projects that are part of that process. And then in this, after we identify some activities, the next step is to present those recommendations to the city for consideration. Staff reviews those recommendations, and then those come to council to approve. So right now, we're at this plane, this part of the planning process where we have a draft consolidated plan and annual action plan. Again, the five-year plan, and then what are we going to do over the next year? That's been developed. We hold a public hearing. We're required by CDBG regs to do two public hearings a year. One we do now, and the other we do during the performance period later in this year. But this is the whole, holding the public hearing for this part of the process. And then there's a 30-day comment period to give the public opportunity to look at the plan and give responses and comments to that. That will actually start tomorrow and run for the next 30 days. Copies are made available. Try to make those as widely available as we can. They're going to be available on the city website. There will also be copies here at City Hall, at Sunny Hill Community Center, and Midpoint Library. And then any oral or written comments that are received, oral comments from tonight's public hearing, or written comments that are received are considered as we look at the final draft of the plan. So the priorities that were developed for this year, there are, or for the next five years to drive the process, there are four of them. The first, these aren't in any particular order, but these were the four that kind of rose to the top. One is neighborhood revitalization, and that really includes any kind of beautifying of neighborhoods. It can include things like emergency repairs for low-income households. It can be code enforcement. It can be beautifying. It's things that, that are more infrastructure-related or, or not service-related, but public facility improvements in neighborhoods. A second priority was supportive services, and that is mostly subject to that public service cap that I mentioned. But it could be other projects that help low and moderate income families are, are under the supportive services. The groups that really presented as the most critical in our community are residents that, for children, and programs and activities for children and youth, the elderly, and wraparound services for persons experiencing homelessness. Those were the most talked about needs for supportive services. The third priority is economic development. Lots of comments about that, growth in businesses, developing new businesses, support for small businesses, downtown revitalization, all presented as a priority. And then the fourth was housing availability and affordability, especially for low and moderate income households. So those were the four priorities that were presented and were included in the five-year consolidated plan that was drafted. So there was a request for proposal that went out after those priorities had been identified. The RFP was made available the end of November, and it gave nonprofits an opportunity to say, here's what the city's priorities are. What are you doing that can help the city address these? There was a public meeting in December to just kind of answer questions and make sure everyone understood what the process was. And then those proposals were due the end of January. Proposals were sought specifically in this annual action plan for two of those priorities, supportive services and neighborhood revitalization. Next slide, please. So these were the recommended activities and the budget that has been included in the draft plan that you have, have in front of you. And these were the recommended activities that, for the year that would start, May 1. Neighborhood revitalization, that particular goal, a total of $300,000. The city has a home repair program that it operates, and so 250 was put in the budget to support that work. That is for repairs that are needed for homeowners that are low income, that they just don't have the ability to meet those needs. So it could have been things that were identified through code enforcement, or it could just be they need a new roof, and they just don't have the means to pay for that. And then the second activity under that category is for self to do emergency home repair. So that's an elderly person's heat goes out, something that's more urgent in nature. And so those combined would be that total of $300,000. And then 267864 supportive services. And there were three activities that were outlined for that particular category. One is fair housing, so two providers to do fair housing activities, 15,000 each for a total of 30,000. Legal aid does, does attorney support for people that are facing foreclosure or have had a tenant situation that, that seems to be a fair housing violation. They provide legal support. Home is housing opportunities made equal, which is a nonprofit that serves this area. If there's been a complaint of a discrimination complaint, they handle those things. And so 30,000 is the total for both of those organizations. And then CBI is recommended for 76473 to do youth services. Again, that was a priority, activities for youth, and they've been a great partner with the city for a long time to do youth activities. And then the other supportive services line item is for the development of Vale Middle School. I know there's been some, some talk about doing some development there that would provide some services to low-income residents. And so that's what that 161387 is set aside for. So the next steps in the planning process, we do the public hearing tonight, do the 30-day comment period starting tomorrow. We do not have our final allocation yet by HUD, but we hope to get that into April or May is usually when they announce that. And then we'll finalize that plan. You will see this come back to you for a final approval to go to HUD. And so once that comes through city council and we have all the final numbers, then we'll go ahead and submit that to HUD. The program year is slated to start May 1. It never does start on May 1 because they're always running behind. And so we will have this program starting as soon as we can, usually in, in August or so. We'll get those final HUD agreements in place. So that is... So that is the detail of that. I know that you haven't had a huge amount of time to look at the draft, so I'll plan on coming back when you are, have it up for consideration. But I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have this evening.
Do you have any questions at this time? Or would you like to wait for the comments and do questions later? How would you like to do that?
Sure.
This is from last, did we use all the funds for self last year?
I think yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Which is good. But I like that program where we can help people out, especially if the, excuse me, water heater goes out, or AC unit, I mean, a compressor goes out, or furnace goes out. So that's the main thing, is that we use all these funds up.
Hundred percent, yes.
And then, because I know we're doing proposals, that's why I'm asking about last year's stuff.
Yeah.
So last year's, what did we use for the, the children, the, the children programs? What was that used for?
For the CBI?
Yeah.
Youth programs? So they do a lot of activities at CBI. And this current allocation that they have for this year that we're in now, they had some money for youth activities and some for workforce development. Because workforce development was in the last con-plan as one of the priorities. So it didn't present as such for this one, for this upcoming five-year plan. But they do all kinds of activities for youth at CBI. So it's some recreational, some educational, some mentoring.
Okay.
That's the kind of thing that they've, they've been working on.
Good, thank you.
We do, just as a matter so that you know, there is a performance report that all this, they're called subrecipients when they get a sub-grant from the city. And they submit draw requests, which have to have backup documentation. So source documentation on everything that they spend. And they also do a performance report that, that they, that we look at and make sure that they're keeping up with what they said they would do in the agreement. So it's, it's pretty, pretty well looked at, so.
Any other questions at this time from council? Just to follow what Mr. Horn said. So you said that workforce development did not present in this five-year plan. However, we do look at it yearly as well. So next year, if we see it as something that we would like CBI, for example, to look back into, that would be a possibility or not to adjust?
We would have to look and see how that fits in the priorities.
Okay.
So because supportive services is fairly broad, if we could make a case that it is helping people that are experiencing homelessness to get employed, I can see where that would be something that could be considered.
Just for homelessness or like just home insecurity in general, like some people who are on the edge or something?
I think we would just have to look at it and make sure. As long as it fits one of the priorities and we can make the case to HUD, there is flexibility. One of the things I love about CDBG is why it is federal funds. There's a lot of local control as to how it meets the needs locally. So as needs present and change, we do have the opportunity to kind of consider what else we need to be doing with the funds.
All right, fantastic. I guess at this point, we could ask if, maybe you have a seat now, and then we ask if there are any people who want to speak, and then we can come back and do the rest. So at this point, are there any people who would like to speak in support of CDBG or what was just presented? Seeing none, are there people who would like to speak in opposition or just make general comments? Okay, seeing none. That will then end the public comment at that time, at this time. At this time, does anybody on council have any further questions or comments for Ms. Mueller or staff?
I have one comment.
For a comment?
I normally do this in my council comments, but I just want to say thank you to Mindy Mueller and her team at Community Development Professionals for the professionalism and the hard work you guys put into the CDBG and administering it. A lot of people might not realize how much hard work goes into this, but a tremendous amount of hard work goes into this, and I appreciate it. I can tell you just from being around the city one or two weeks over the last 30-some years, we, we used to run this, and Ashley, you could probably tell the story more than I can. We used to try to administer this on our own, and we got in some, it was very difficult for us to do. And we got in some hot water with the federal government and had to clean up our act. But one of the things we did is we, we decided, and at the urging of the federal government to contract this out, never since we've done this, I've seen so much more professionalism in this CDBG program being run and administered like it should through community development professionals. So I just wanted to say thank you. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I did have some questions, if you would mind coming back to the podium. One of my comments was the very same thing. I wanted to say nicely done. These four priorities look fantastic, and like you said earlier, very fitting to what we're looking at. And one of my questions was, you mentioned that people can comment on the plan. Is there, how can they do that? Do they call a specific person? If they write, who do they email or write a letter to?
There is an email that goes to Community and Economic Development, CED@cityofmiddletown.org.
Okay.
And that's where all the comments should be sent. If they want to drop off comments, they can certainly do that here. If there's a need for accommodation, then they can let, let us know that, and we will be happy to accommodate that if we need to take an oral or something that would be more accommodating for a special need, we can do that.
Okay, great. And the, to drop off in the city, that would be the third floor, correct?
It would.
All right. Just wanted to make sure people, people know that. And then I had a question about the HERP, and this might be more for staff, just looking at, knowing that we are looking at CDBG funds that have to be spent for low-to-mid-income families or households. With HERP and saying it's citywide, is there a legal process? Like, how does that work? Do we, are we able to ask people what their financial status is? Or how do we determine that they're low to mid-income for CDBG funds to be able to be spent?
We would have to ask them that.
And that's okay legally? Yeah, okay. For some reason, I'd had heard that that might not be possible, but just wanted to clarify.
If I remember the conversation correctly, I think there was a discussion at one point when we were talking about another round of funding of, should we? And I think we kind of, as a policy, decided probably not. But I, I think for purposes of complying with, you know, the CDBG program and the, the federal government regulations, I think it would be totally fine to ask that.
Excellent. Very good. And then, let's see here. Just curious, you said there's a formula from the federal government to determine how much money any city can get. Is there a way that we can work to increase that? Is there anything we can do?
Not really.
Okay.
So much of it, they just look at lots of different factors, and we don't get to see the full picture of what all those, how that all works together. But the more people you have, you know, that helps. But they're looking at things like the age of your housing units, the level of poverty, how old is your infrastructure? So I don't think there are, because you're making progress in those things, you know, I don't see that you're going to lose funding. But it's, it's hard to gain unless you have a significant event or significant population growth.
Okay. Well, wonderful. That's all from me right now. And anything else from anybody in council? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Mueller. Really appreciate that. Okay, this concludes, oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to do a straw vote at this point for anything in particular? Usually, no. All right. So that does conclude our public hearing tonight. The next item on the agenda this evening is citizen comments. A professional presentation is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back-and-forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present to council on record, uninterrupted, and have the floor. Let's see here, we have one comment card this evening, and I will prompt you for your next steps when you reach the podium. I would like to invite Benjamin Hiley to the podium, please. And you may sit or stand according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please do go ahead and state your full name and Middletown residence or work address or interest in the city for the record when you are ready, before we begin. Certainly, please state your full name and either your residence, your address at the residence, or work address, or interest in the city. One moment, please. Is the mic on?
It is, it's on.
I might have to pull it close.
Oh, gotcha, thank you. Are we picking that up? No, we're not picking it up. Just like, like we are.
My name is Benjamin Hiley. My address is 1618.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have the, the time on for four minutes. Please commence.
I'm a married father of six, lifelong resident of Middletown, registered voter, police supporter, licensed professional counselor, and CCW holder. I spent 15 years at Warren County Juvenile Court, where I worked closely with law enforcement and came to deeply appreciate the men and women who keep our community safe. I want to address the shooting of Christopher Gorak by Middletown Police. Butler County Prosecutor Mike Moser said, "In three-tenths of one second, that threat of deadly harm was responded to with lethal force by officer closest to the door." I agree with Mr. Moser that the officer fired in a fraction of a second. Mr. Moser also stated, "Pointing a firearm at a police officer will likely be met with justifiable lethal force." And I agree with Mr. Moser, that should be the case. The problem with Mr. Moser's statement is that Mr. Gorak didn't point his gun at anyone. And it is not lawful for police to shoot on sight simply for possession of a firearm. Citizens have the right to bear arms. Possession of a firearm in and of itself does not constitute a threat. And Mr. Gorak couldn't have raised his gun in .3 seconds if he'd tried. As a licensed professional counselor, I have done some study on the brain. Three-tenths of a second is not enough time to think. Anything done that fast is instinctive or reflexive. I realize that police want to go home to their families each day. For that reason, I admit the shooting was understandable. But understandable and justifiable are not always the same thing. Basic firearms training teaches that you must identify what you're shooting at before you pull the trigger. Not having time to process thought in three-tenths of a second, this officer instinctively identified a citizen, a citizen with a firearm at his side as a threat. But a citizen holding a firearm at his side is by definition not a threat. The officer instinctively fired faster than his brain could process the fact that there was no threat. And his instinct was wrong. But I am not here to complain. I have appeared here today to make a practical request. Though the legal process has failed in this case, Chief Nelson has the authority to keep this officer off the streets of Middletown. This officer has proven he's a danger to our community. He's the kind of twitchy cop that will reflexively shoot a 12-year-old with an airsoft gun. As long as this officer is on our streets, I will fear for the lives of my loved ones and fellow citizens such as Mr. Gorak. Please don't let this tragedy repeat itself by continuing to allow this young man to roam our city with a firearm.
Thank you, Mr. Hiley. And that concludes our public participation. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lally, followed by Councilmember Carter, and then to my right with Councilmember, Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn, and I will speak last. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor Schlemkin. The first thing I want to recognize is we have somebody in the audience tonight who tonight is her last night covering the city council meeting, right, Lauren? Is tonight your last night? Lauren is retiring from the Journal News, so I just want to say a big shout-out to Lauren. Thank you for your 30-some years of, of service. We will miss you at the city council meeting, so thank you and good job. The second thing I want to bring up, once again, I, I started earlier about things that make Middletown a better place, and that was how the community development professionals implement the CDBG program. And I think they do a wonderful job, and this is a better community for it. The second thing I want to recognize is tonight in our presentations, the town mall RFQ is going to be presented. But I just wanted to give a, this is kind of an internal attaboy to Ashley, to your staff, to you and the staff that have put together this RFQ. I think you guys have done an incredible job on this. And I think what this has done is it showed the community that they have an opportunity to have some input and some say in, in what goes on in the community. And we'll see how the RFQ settles out once developers start responding to it. But I just want to say thank you, Ashley, to you and, and your staff for the great job they did in this RFQ. It's really, it's very good. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening, Middletown and community and all the visitors. I too will miss Lauren sitting in the audience and calling me and saying, "What you got to say?" So good luck, Lauren. But what I want to share tonight is something to help make Middletown a better place. And one of the things that I would like to talk about is that code enforcement and nuisance. I had a truck parked in front of my house. It's been there for years. And then, well, I won't say years, I'll say a year. And the person that lives in this house across the street from me has taken upon himself to put garbage and trash in the empty lot next door to me. And it's been a nuisance for me to go out my front door and look at this. And I called code enforcement and nuisance, and they're all really pleasant. But I had an incident on Tuesday with one of our dispatchers that truly turned me off. To make Middletown better, you have to be respectful to everyone that calls because you never know what the issue may be. And this, this dispatcher said to me, "You said it three times," and hung up on me. I couldn't believe it. I had called to say, "The police are out front and they're towing a car, and I want to know why they won't tow this truck that's sitting across." And the first dispatcher said, "Maybe if you call back." And I called back to say, "Okay, the police is moving this car now, so why won't they take the truck?" I couldn't understand it. But I said, "I have to talk about this because you are here for us, everyone." You know, when you're a public servant, you have to accept the people that you serve, and you have to respect the people you serve. Because we all have a purpose, and we all are walking in our purpose, hopefully. I mean, if the job is to the point where you are irritated, then maybe you should find something else to do. My second issue, and it's not an issue, is with the group that I am a part of. I attended the meeting on Saturday, and they were asking me, "Why is it that we can't start searching for a city manager now? It doesn't have to interfere with the city manager that's in effect right now. That, it doesn't have to interfere with her job. We can just start now. Because if we wait, we probably won't have a city manager until next year." So I said to them, "Yes, I will speak about this." So I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much tonight. Good to see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd. I would like to reiterate what Councilman Lally said. Thank you, Ashley, Nathan, and the rest of the staff putting together this RFQ. I've looked at it, and it, it looks great. Other than that, I'd just like to thank the Rotary Club for inviting me out to present a city update today. And I think I actually wore them out because we hit time constraints, so, but no, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Good evening, everyone. When I started doing this, I said I would every once in a while do an education moment. So I'm going to do one tonight specifically talking about starting a business. Now, think about this, you know, let's name four companies: Google, Amazon, Disney, and Microsoft. All those companies started in a garage or in the back of someone's home. But then they grew, and we know them as very large companies. So that's where you start. We have an excellent staff here. And at times, when people decide to move out of their homes, if they don't, if they're not a home-based business, and they want to lease a storefront or lease a building in the city, we have to make sure that we help these folks because there are zoning regulations. there are zoning regulations, there are licenses, there are permits. We have an ordinance on signage that you need to submit if you're going to have a sign in front of your business, that you need to submit that to the city. So I would encourage anyone who's going to start a business, it's not just over a weekend, you sign a lease, you make sure you have insurance, because when I was in the big-boy world, when I was doing construction, before I started my business, anytime you saw a strip mall, the owner of that building, they would, they were required for them to get their certificate of occupancy to make sure that each space was called what I, what is, it's just, it's not a technical term, but that's what we called it, was a vanilla box. And what that is, is it has an exit sign at the front entrance, the back entrance, and has enough lighting so their owner or the realtor can show the space, but it has nothing inside because they don't know what business they're going to have in there, because they can have, they can have various different businesses, and that's how they would get their certificate of occupancy from the county or the state or the city, whichever was applicable. But the person that's actually going to do the business, it is their responsibility to go to the local authority, having jurisdiction, being, again, a county or a city, and asking the question, "What do I need to do to have this business?" It might just be presenting drawings, doing what's called a tenant fit-up, and you get your inspections, and then the city's aware. Because here's what happens after you fit up your space. After it's inspected and passed, then the only people who check it is Mr. Lally's group, is the fire department. They come annually and they check, make sure that the space is still safe, they check the exit lights, and that's it. So we're starting, we're seeing that, we're having some businesses that are struggling, and we're here to help. And what I mean by the city staff that helps, this is how much we have here. We have the building department, we have economic director, we also have the health department, if that is applicable. We also in-house, if you are just starting a business, we have the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, and David will help you with that. So we have the things here, the tools here, and even the SBDC will help you. The State of Ohio has a great website if you're wanting to start a business, be it an LLC or corporation. It'll go through all the steps you need to do. But the thing is, if you want to have a business, and we want to encourage that, because again, that's how these, now these juggernauts of businesses started. We want small businesses in Middletown, and we want you to build that business and then grow that business with more employees, and then get grants to, for equipment, for whatever you need. Because it's always nice to say, "This started in our city, and it grew to this point." So take advantage of that for those who are trying to start a business or who have a current business, to make sure that just because you lease a space, that doesn't mean that you have a business. You need to check with the city, make sure that all the permits, licensing, certifications are done, so then you can just run your business, and we can help you in any way we can. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. And I just have a few this evening as well. First, I also wanted to thank our Public Works Department as well for all the good work that they did over the weekend with the snow. It was a very quick job on the streets, and I really appreciate that. Just a reminder that our Hometown Hero Banner Program opened January fifteenth and closes March first. Bless you. If you have a banner that went up in 2024, please email Jerry Lewis to schedule an appointment for pickup. The new designs are being created for 2025. And for more information, please do email JerryLewis@JerryL@cityofMiddletown.org, and that's Jerry, J-E-R-I. Midpoint Library in Middletown, located at 125 Broad Street in downtown Middletown, is hosting Black History Black Voices on Thursday, February twenty-seventh. You are invited to attend, share, and learn of the many great contributors to our city from eighteen twenty to twenty twenty-five. The event begins at 5:00 PM and ends at 7:15 PM. For more information, please call Abdul Shakur Ahmad at 937-244-8381. Be sure to check out midpointlibrary.org under Programs and filter for the Middletown location for the dates you choose. There are many programs offered for adults, little ones, and teens, including Storytime, Dungeons & Dragons, and an Anime and Manga Club. Be sure to stay up to date with what our incredible local Middletown Library has to offer. It is my personal favorite library in the whole wide world. Thursday, February twenty-seventh, New Ails is offering Comic Book Trivia. Located at thirteen thirty Manchester Avenue in downtown, the event begins at 6:30 PM. Please visit downtownmiddletown.org for more information. Friday, February twenty-eighth through Sunday, March second, the Sorok Opera House, located at sixty-three South Main Street in downtown Middletown, presents the Fenwick Theater Program, The Addams Family School Edition. An original story, Wednesday Addams has grown up and fallen in love with a sweet, smart young man from a respectable family. How will the family deal with such sorrowful news? Please visit sorokoperahouse.org for tickets and more information. The Lenten season is quickly approaching, and Saturday, March first, is the Fat Tuesday Donut and Beer Walk. This much-beloved DMI event begins next Saturday at 6:00 PM. Beginning in the Pendleton Art Center, located at eleven oh five Central Avenue in downtown Middletown, each donut shop will have a specifically selected beer pairing available for purchase. There will also be a donut scavenger hunt. Find the hidden donuts in downtown businesses and redeem your passport at the pack before you leave to be entered into a raffle. Please visit downtownmiddletown.org for more information and to purchase tickets for this fun and joyful event. Many of our residents look for things for families to do in Middletown. Look no further than our own Hote Fusion Glass Studio and Gallery, located at ten fifty Central Avenue in downtown. Bring the whole family and do something fun at this ten-year-old glass fusion business in Middletown. It is kid-friendly and great for all ages, date nights, and family outings. Take some classes or workshops. To learn more, follow Hote Fusion on Facebook and Instagram, or visit their website at hotefusion.wordpress.com, and that is H-A-U-T-E. If you love glass, Middletown boasts the oldest continuously-running stained glass studio in the nation, and it is gorgeous. Please visit beauvere.net, spelled B-E-A-U-V-E-R-R-E, and peruse the beautiful pictures. You can also sign up to take stained glass classes from world-class artists. We hope you will enjoy this treasure in downtown Middletown, located at ten fifty-four Central Avenue. As a reminder, the City of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year, so if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your community in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofMiddletown.org. Lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joint satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all from me tonight, and this concludes our council comments. The next agenda item is city manager reports. Acting City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. So tonight for your review, we have four different presentations. I did pass out a packet that has all of the different presentation information, so you can follow along while you're looking at the screen. So first, I'm going to invite Mr. Dave Pierce up with the Middletown Youth Soccer Association for the first presentation.
Pleasure to talk with you tonight, and I don't know how to act without the four minutes starting up there. This is a new thing for me. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about Middletown Youth Soccer Association, some of the things that we're doing, and the impact that we have on the community. I'm joined tonight with Kathy Stites, who's been engaged with soccer for over thirty years. She's going to talk about select soccer, including the Spring Blast Tournament, which is coming up in the middle of March, and the economic impact that those two tournaments has on the city. But before I start, I want to recognize and thank the Public Works team. They do an awesome job in assisting us in running soccer and helping with both Smith and Jaco Parks, and especially a shout-out for Scott, Charlie, and Ed, who field a lot of our calls and questions and needs, so I really appreciate those guys and what they do. Tonight, you're going to hear an example of how one of our community parks is more than just recreational space for residents. It's a facility to drive economic development and economic impact into this city. I estimate that between soccer, light-up, lacrosse, Ohio Challenge, pickleball, holiday hoopla, and some other smaller events over the course of a year, and I follow these events really closely, and I talk to the event organizers about some of the key drivers to determine the economic impact. Those events alone are driving about ten million dollars of economic impact into this community. We're very blessed to have the parks that we have, especially the larger community parks, and I believe Midway Baseball's on the verge of driving that number over ten million, once we get Goldman Park in a position to be able to host tournaments. We're going to be bringing a lot of out-of-town visitors into this city. So on to Middletown Youth Soccer. Was formed in nineteen eighty-six, operates as a 501(c)(3) organization, has two components, both SE and Select Soccer for ages, kids in the ages of three to seventeen in the Middletown area, and on an annual basis, we serve six hundred to seven hundred and fifty children. With SE Soccer, we're sanctioned by National SE Soccer Association. In the SE side, we've got about three hundred and fifty kids in the program, and on the recreational, we rely on corporate sponsors to underwrite the expenses, and also we charge a modest registration fee. It is noteworthy to say, we do not turn away any children for financial reasons. Each year, we will grant somewhere between fifteen to twenty scholarships for children, which ultimately costs us about eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred dollars. So no child is denied participation. The other component, the other program that we run is Select Soccer, which is for the more skilled and motivated players, and I'm going to ask Kathy to speak a little bit about Select, because that's the side that she runs.
Our Select program, right now, we have around three hundred and fifty kids. We run out of Middletown area. We have kids out of Trenton, Franklin, Monroe area playing in our club right now. We also have Highland County is a sub to Eclipse. We have Loveland area Impact. Loveland Impact is an area that they come over and they play within our group of kids. All of our kids play in the league, which is the CPL League, Cardinal Premier, or they play in the Buckeye Premier League on, two times a year. You know, the leagues run the spring and the fall. We also, the tournaments? Yeah, we also run two tournaments. We run the one March, March the fifteenth and sixteenth this year. We have over two hundred teams coming. Last year, we had two hundred and forty, so we did have to use like Monroe Park because we can't get them all at Smith. We normally run twenty-five or twenty-six fields at Smith Park. The ages on these kids are anywhere from eight years old to nineteen that run in these games, so they'll be there again this year. We have a lot of hotels coming up. All the hotels between Cincinnati and Dayton are full. Last year, we were over fifteen hundred rooms that were rented out for the weekend, for the Friday and Saturday night. This year, right now, we're at twelve hundred rooms. So, and then that's counting, because we still have rooms to be booked for that. And with the Eclipse program, we do have a few kids that cannot afford to pay, so we do kind of help them get in the program also. This year, with our SE program, we are going to do an academy, and that'll be in April and May, and that'll be from three years old up to thirteen with this academy, and those are just one night a week. And we kept the fee modest, so we'll be able to have more kids be able to come into this program and get them ready for the fall season.
Just?
Yep. Oh, yeah, MidFest tournament is in September. That one also brings in, well, the Spring Blast brings in around three point one million in economic impact, and then the MidFest is a smaller one because teams don't seem to travel as much in the fall. We do get them from Kentucky and Indiana, both. The Spring Blast, we get them from Michigan, Indiana, Pennsylvania, all over Ohio, Kentucky, and we had some from Tennessee. As I said, MidFest is in September. That one's a little bit smaller, and that one also is about a one point two million in economic impact on that one.
Thanks, Kathy. Combined, you know, we're looking at thousands of visitors that come in for those two tournaments, and is a reason why soccer has been successful for the last thirty years. Spring Blast is in its twenty-seventh year, MidFest is in its twenty-second year. We've had significant impact to the businesses in town. Over the last twenty-six years, we've brought a half a million visitors to Middletown, coming from throughout Ohio, Michigan, Indiana, Kentucky, West Virginia, and Tennessee. They all require hotel rooms, food, gas, and other sundry items. We attract over twenty thousand visitors annually for the SE traveling season, the SE District Tournament that we host, and the Spring Blast and the MidFest tournaments. And as Kathy said, we'll generate over fifteen hundred room nights, or at least we did in two thousand and twenty-four. From a capital perspective, we have invested significantly at Smith Park. Back in two thousand and twelve, we were asked by the city to remove the eleven baseball diamonds, and without any public assistance, we were able to fund that. About, back in nineteen ninety-nine, we led the renovation project at Jaco Park. We raised seven hundred and fifty thousand in private funds, and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the city funded into the project. So that was a million-dollar project that we led. We contribute annually to the asphalt program at Smith Park, along with the Ohio Challenge and Light Up. So when you go through and you see that new pavement, which you'll see portions of new pavement this year, those three organizations were critical in getting that done. We recently invested, this last year, in a new storage building at Smith Park, and a number of years ago, we were asked by the city to contribute to the new playground equipment at Smith, which we obviously complied. And then we've got annual maintenance responsibilities at the park. Historically, we've received no funding from the city, and I'm not aware any youth organizations receive funding, which at times can be challenging. We're digging out of a hole from the COVID year, where we lost seventy-eight thousand dollars, primarily because three days before the tournament were to start, after we had the field set up, the trophies bought, two t-shirts to sell or souvenirs to sell, we had all of our costs loaded in. Three days before the tournament starts, the government shuts everything down, and we had nowhere, we had nowhere to turn, and we did the right thing by returning all the team fees to those teams. It would have been, some tournaments didn't, we decided in our best interest to return them, so we did. So we've been digging out of that hole for a number of years. So what's the ask? We're here to request tonight fifteen thousand dollars from the bed tax fund, and you can take your pick on what you want to fund. As I said earlier, we have twenty to thirty kids that we provide scholarships for. We need to redesign our website so that we are more user-friendly and communicate more effectively with the Middletown community and getting kids signed up to play, and then we need to purchase a couple of replacement goals and nets, and those aren't cheap. Matching set of goals and nets is about nine thousand dollars today. So we've got two sets of those that we've got to replace, so we would appreciate your consideration, and thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I just, excuse me, I just have a few comments. So I don't think anybody here in Middletown would ever question the impact that this organization has on the city. I, you know, my son participated. I have friends that have kids that participate in this organization. I have friends from my childhood that travel to Middletown for these tournaments, let alone the historical impact that this organization has had on this city. Whatever's been asked of this organization, you guys have done without ever asking for assistance. And what happened in the COVID year is extremely unfortunate, but you guys did the right thing, and you returned all those fees, because if not, it could have put some of those clubs under. So, you know, obviously, you did the right
So, you know, obviously, you did the right thing. I mean, my vote is to fund everything that you've asked. And, and I would even take it a step further and say that each year, the city should participate in some sort of contribution to, to this organization. Because over the years, when you look at how much money you've put as an organization into our parks, and more importantly, into our kids, and you, you've chosen every time, when the city's asked, can you do this to the park, can you do that to the park? Or when a family contacts you, and their child wants to play soccer, but they can't afford, you, you'll pick it up. So, I know I'm just one vote, but this is probably the easiest, the easiest thing that's come across ever. So, I just want to thank you guys, um, the impact on, on this community. There's more kids now, you know, if you think back 20 years ago, 25 years ago, soccer was sort of a dying sport in the country. And it's, it's come back. I mean, a lot is, you know, with, with MLS and things like that, but I think, you know, it's organizations such as yours that have reinvigorated. You know, I'm a little bit older, 43, so I was kind of in the soccer heyday and playing Y League. I was terrible, so I didn't play very much. But, you know, it's, it's organizations like this that, that give our kids an opportunity to get outside, to do productive things, stay off their devices, meet other kids. So, you know, I, I've always been pretty passionate about, you know, we need to, to do more for the youth in this community and, and give them opportunities. And, and this right here, I, like I said, I'm one vote, but I, I would say, everything that you've asked for is more than reasonable. And I would take it a step further to say, you know, you've been a great, I can't even say partner to the city of Middletown, because you've never asked for anything. Um, you've just been a great ambassador for our community and for our youth for many years, without ever asking the city for anything. And so, you know, I, as long as I'm on council, I would like to, to see that, you know, we work with organizations and partner with organizations such, such as yours. So, thank you.
Thanks for the kind, kind words and support, and it's only possible because of the great volunteers that stand behind us but aren't here. And I have to tell you what a wonderful park, Smith Park is. I mean, it's awesome. We get feedback all the time. Unlike other parks that cancel games when it rains, we have never canceled a game in Middletown at Smith Park because of rain. It's because of the soil that's there and underlying gravel bed underneath of it. And thankfully, the city did make improvements to the restrooms, which have been noted last year at our soccer tournament, um, about how much people appreciate the new bathrooms. So, you guys, the city's been a great partner for us, both Smith and Jacob, so thank you. I'll be back next year.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from council?
I'd just reiterate what Councilman Wes said. I'm all in favor of supporting the, the soccer programs, and, and I think, you know, I think we'd be, I don't even think it takes a vote. I think the city manager can go ahead and release the, the funds that's requested. I think I appreciate the transparency in telling us what it does, but I'm all in favor of helping the youth soccer out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I had one question, um, from Ms. Dyke. You had mentioned a training program in April and May of this year. You said it was a modest fee. Just curious, how much that fee is, and where do people, where can people go to find out about that?
Okay, we put it out on Facebook and in the Say Soccer website. It's also on the Eclipse Facebook page. It's only $35. And then they get, um, a shirt. So, we're doing this by, our select coaches are going to be setting up the academy on Thursday night, when they might be practicing their own team. So, they're coming out and sharing that. And we also have our director of coaching, Steve, that's going to help oversee it. We hired him this year to help out with our program, because it's starting to grow. We want the kids to get everything that they need to get, you know, in training.
What's the program called again?
It's, uh, NYSA Eclipse Academy.
Okay, NYSA Eclipse Academy.
Yeah, NYSA, Middletown Youth Soccer.
M, M as in Mary.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, and it's on the Eclipse Facebook, and it's also on the Middletown Say Soccer website on there. And then the Middletown Say Soccer, they are going, the section, their recreational program is, we're going to do the camp with the Select, starting in, uh, April and May. And then they're going to do something just like a weekend or a Saturday in July and June, possibly June and July, not, we're confirming those dates, just to get the kids ready, the recreational kids ready, so when they start on August the 1st, they've got some of this talent that they can start using.
All right. Well, thank you both very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite down the Middletown Art Center for their presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, members of the community. We thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal to partnership and for funding. My name is Fran Morrison. I am the current Board of Governors President for the Middletown Art Center. I'm also joined by our Executive Director, Kate Dykes, from the Middletown Art Center. We are here to request the city of Middletown become a financial partner with the Middletown Art Center as part of the city's annual budget. We will give a brief overview of the history of the MAC, as it's known to the community, our vision and mission, our trajectory of growth in the region as an art center, and finally, the return on investment for the city of Middletown. We will show how partnering with us can be a catalyst to make the region in general and the city in particular, one of the most dynamic cities in the region. A commitment of $45,000 annually will help sustain the value, valuable asset the Middletown Art Center is to the city's population. So, let me outline our case, who we are. Our mission is to enrich our community by fostering creative expression through education, exhibition, and collaboration. Our vision is to make the MAC the leading community art center in our region. To develop diverse and comprehensive art instruction for youth, adults, artists, both novice and accomplished, and to present a vibrant and innovative exhibitions that challenge and inform and reach out to the community. The Middletown Art Center, many people don't know this, was established in 1957 and has been a viable, thriving art center for 68 years. The center supports art education to community members of all ages. We host exhibitions of diverse artists and have developed a plethora of community outreach partnerships. The MAC operates as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our services are extended to all ages, abilities, and many are free to the, to the public. Our educational program. The MAC offers painting, drawing, pottery, jewelry-making, enameling, fiber arts, photography, photography classes, and a variety of high-interest workshops. The center offers these classes and workshops, charging fees that cover the payment of the instructor and center cost. Most of the staff are contractors, providing employment opportunities for artists in our region. Our annual exhibition season, the MAC hosts an exhibition season annually in our two quality galleries. Those art shows feature prominent artists from our state, from the greater Cincinnati area, and these exhibitions bring into our center and the Middletown many, many visitors. Last year, 52,000 visitors attended one of our exhibitions. The MAC also supports satellite gallery space featuring local artists with another 44,000 visitors engaging with those exhibits throughout the city. The exhibit committee curates high-quality shows that feature a variety of art mediums from diverse artists, and all of these exhibits are offered free to the public. Community outreach. The Middletown Art Center is also committed to community outreach and engagement. We are proud of this commitment to foster collaboration between local and region, regional agencies, providing services to underserved members of our community free of charge. Our outreach efforts make the arts and associated experiences accessible to all. We currently have 40-plus partnerships, like Middletown City Schools, Community Building Institute, Adopt a Class of Cincinnati, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Butler Behavioral Health, Abilities First, 3R Development STEM Camp, just to name a few. Programming for these partnerships and collaborations are all offered free and in the form of workshops, art classes, field trips, and lectures. Why support the Middletown Art Center? The MAC has continued to grow our educational programming and enrollment in an era when other for-profit and nonprofit organizations have folded. Our staff includes contracted artists as instructors. Kate is our Executive Director, and a since, an Assistant Business Manager, a PR and Marketing Manager, an Education and Programming Manager, and a small, part-time support staff. The MAC has continued to expand our artist repertoire, breaking attendance records for our annual exhibits and unique events. Our opening recession, our opening receptions offer the community an evening out to our downtown location with appetizers, beverages, live music, and it's all free to the public. If you have not stopped by for one of our openings, you really should. They're, they're quite an evening out. Our partnerships and collaborations support art enrichment to many citizens who would otherwise not have exposure to these valuable learning experiences through the scholarships that we offer to our clients with financial need. We offer our scholarships both to youth and adults, so that they can take classes, attend summer camps, and that's all just based on financial need and request, simple request process. The MAC footprint in the city is so valuable, supported by the number of visitors who come to our events, classes, and exhibitions. These visitors undoubtedly stop for coffee, buy gas, catch a lunch or dinner, and pick up supplies at local retailers while they are in the city. Throughout the tri-state, local art centers are supported by their municipality or township. The city of Springdale, city of Springfield Township, the city of Hamilton, city of Oxford, Fairfield, the city of Springboro, just to name a few municipalities who support their local art center. The MAC Board of Governor provides fiscal oversight and is committed to the strategic planning process that provides for growth of the center as well as the fiscal sustainability. One such strategy is to request annual funds from the city to continue to sustain the magnificent work happening right at your next door, we're neighbors, at the Middletown Art Center. The center undergoes independent audits, and we work with the Middletown Community Foundation to manage any memorial donations or grants that we receive. The post-COVID economic environment has made fundraising efforts a challenge, and we rely totally on fundraising through the community. But through creative problem-solving, we are seeking funding solutions in our proposal to you tonight. Your support will help continue the splendid work that the arts, um, have become expected in your community and that we have outlined here tonight. You have a page that references all the growth statistics that we have collected over the last five years, and they are the basis for, um, your reference and for ours on how we've grown, uh, the art center in your community. We're happy to discuss any of those metrics with you or answer any questions that you might have, and we really thank you for, uh, this opportunity to present to you tonight.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or council, uh, questions or comments from council at this time?
I do.
Mr. Horn.
So, thank you for your presentation. I'm a card-carrying member of the Cincinnati Art Museum, so...
I am as well.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't think people understand, because time just goes on, and your, your building's just been there, and it's, people just say, oh, that's nice, and they just drive by. At one time, we had, we've always had the art music, or the art, um, Art Center. Uh, one time, we had opera in Middletown, that's private money, but we also had a symphony here. And to me, the arts are so important, because yes, I'm for soccer and baseball. I played not whole baseball when I played, when I was here in, in my youth. Those are important, but art can start, that's what actually gets your hand-eye coordination going. That helps people grow, and it goes through your whole lifetime. And I greatly appreciate when I do, uh, visit, um, any art gallery and some of the events that they have. I mean, as you know, the Cincinnati Art Museum, they have yoga at the art museum, they have Art After Dark once a month. They have training for children and, and adults and, and so forth. And you offer the same thing, and it's imperative that we don't let the arts go away. I mean, it's just something, it's part of our history. It helps people express themselves, that, this is, maybe they are not athletic, maybe they're not business-minded, but this is their, this is how they express themselves. And I think we're, it's a shame if we don't, uh, put you in the budget, since you've been here as long as I've, I'm, I'm aware of, and I've been here for 55 years. Uh, and it's just very important that we understand that the arts are so important, and especially in the downtown area, so everyone knows where it's at, where our children can, can come here and enjoy it, and people who are not children, and then people who are even older, and take advantage of that, and also have artists come in and have gatherings. And, and we just need to, we, we cannot lose this art. Uh, we've lost too many of the other, other arts, uh, in our city, um, because of lack of interest, lack of funding. But this is something that has to stay, um, and it's something that needs to be looked at, and, and like you said, it needs to be put in our budget, um, annually as part of, uh, of, of our fabric.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. If I can just give a private testimony, um, I spent my career as an art teacher, um, so I've been involved and immersed in the arts. And as you know, in our country, we have a mental health crisis, and one thing that the arts, um, does, um, almost as a side benefit is, um, it allows people to have that time to express themselves, to feel accomplished, um, together with other people. And we really feel that at the art center. Children coming there, uh, they're in a safe space, they have wonderful activities, and then the pride, when their parents come to see their work, or, um, our student shows, where high school students come and so proudly, "Look what I've accomplished." It, it really is a testimony and an institution that brings value to any community. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and the fact that you have that, and you also have gatherings, and you have people come in. It's, it is nice to just walk around with a drink and, and just enjoy what people have done and see different ways people express themselves.
And Kate has been so innovative. Um, the Abilities First program, um, you know, she's developed a sensory, um, day where, where students can come and, um, experience art in a different way, and so, you know, we look forward to being able to continue to grow and expand.
Thank you again.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to say, I agree with this, too. I think it's extremely important, and I think the return on investment here, it might not necessarily be the impact that, like, we heard from the soccer group, but the return on investment here is quality of life, and I, I think that's extremely important. The question I do have for you, City Manager Combs, is, uh, for this year, have we identified where in the budget you would fund this from?
We would fund this out of the bed tax fund.
Okay.
And there's approximately around 500,000 right now, maybe a little less.
Excellent. Good. Thank you guys very much.
Any other comments or questions?
No, this is another thing that I can't do well. I can't draw, but I love it, so I support it.
Yeah, I can't draw a stick man.
Whatever, I saw that.
I better come over there.
Yeah. Um, yes, I also wanted to...
Um, yeah, I also wanted to say thank you so much. I had mentioned before the meeting that my father, who's eighty-two years old, took classes at the MAC. He ensured that my sisters and I could take classes at the MAC, and over the years, it was Middletown Foreign Arts Center or Middletown Art Center, but at the MAC. And it's a beautiful location, if, if you have not ever been there, you can walk in, you can purchase art, beautiful jewelry, beautiful pottery, paintings, it's a wonderful, wonderful, peaceful place to be. And over the years, like I said, I took classes every Saturday in the youth, oh, what's it called, Youth Program, Youth, um, yeah, Summer Youth Workshops, yes. And even into my adulthood, my sister and I continued, I've taken shoemaking classes there, because you also have things that are not on the norm. That's how I learned how to throw pots, and that's how I learned to oil paint and watercolors, and that saved me all my life. So I'm just, I'm thrilled that you guys are here tonight and asking this of the city. And I think we are the leading art center in the region. I remember when I was taking classes, people were like, "We drive from Cincinnati to come here. This is where we come for classes, this is it."
You wouldn't believe how many artists in the region.
Indiana, yeah.
Once they see our gallery space, it's sought after. We hosted the, the state watercolor show here, and that brought in artists from all over the state of Ohio, because we really do have beautiful facility, and so it is a sought-out gallery.
Yes.
To show there.
And some of the mediums that we instruct are unique to our.
Can you speak in the microphone? Either one.
Some of the mediums that we instruct are unique to our art center, like our enamel classes, our metal smithing classes, those are, you know, you have to take those at university or come to the MAC, so we have people coming from Indiana to take our, our metal smithing classes. And another thing that I wanted to note, you know, we have had exponential growth in our community outreach programs and our free art-making programs for youth, and we hear all the time from all of the kids coming with the field trips and the Big Brothers Big Sisters and all of these classes, that this is the first time that they've ever been to an art gallery. These are their first experiences, and we're able to offer that to underserved community members, so we're happy to have that right here in their community in Middletown.
Yes, one of the things I'm actually gonna be mentioning in March for, for council comments is the Fire and Ice coming up, so I was looking forward to that. I was gonna call you actually and ask you, hey, can you give me some more information?
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Absolutely, thank you. I was going to ask for more information, and I do also, while you're passing those out, just wanna say that this is also a great draw off the interstate into our downtown. Thank you, and it has been for decades, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, because I was going to call for that anyway. Thank you. All right. Anything else from council this evening?
I guess I should add also that I have a couple of pieces in my cabinet that were made at the art center.
Oh. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any comments for the funding request of the forty-five thousand for staff?
Any comments?
Proceed.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm just curious also about how much we actually have, like you said, under five hundred, but also, I know staff is working on some guidelines, maybe like an application process, so that we can get this equitable for everybody who's asking for funds. So I know we're in that process currently, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, so I don't know if you want to wait until that's done, or if, we just need to know, like, what we're looking at as far as the funds, and what we usually spend it on, and those kinds of questions.
Right. I think for the purposes tonight, we could proceed.
Okay.
But that is something that staff will be presenting in the coming months to see if that's something that city council would like to see in the future us do.
Right, because it's not necessarily, oh, we have half a million dollars, because some of it is spent in other ways, at, in other times, and so it's something that we need to look at.
Correct.
Right. It's not just an endless amount. All right, thank you.
All right, so the next presentation we have is the Premier Atrium Foundation CareFlight.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor Schlamke, and Vice Mayor West, and Councilman Horn, and Council, Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Lolly, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Mike Stautberg, and I'm the president of the Atrium Medical Center Foundation, and I've had the privilege to meet most of you, one of you just tonight, so it was nice to meet you, Councilmember Carter. Here to just give a quick update on what the foundation does for our community, but also for the hospital. Back in two thousand six, when I first started working for the health system, we were tasked with raising money to help build a new hospital in this community, and there were some pieces that they were able to put together financing for. As a matter of fact, the city helped us with some of our bond financing, and we were very grateful for that. But there was a lot of gap financing we had to find dollars for, in particular, to put a heart center here in the city of Middletown, which is what our community told us was most needed. So in our effort to build healthier communities, we sought out and raised about five and a half million dollars to make that happen, and today, we continue to do heart surgeries, form new partnerships, and are expanding those services. Since then, we put dollars into cancer and diabetes and pulmonary services. We got through COVID. Speaking of COVID, that was an effort that actually, like many others you've heard, put us into a financial bind. What many people don't realize is that we did make the space and do what we needed to do to take care of the cancer patients, but the reimbursement models in the country do not provide a whole lot of reimbursement for respiratory illness. And so as we were ramping up, taking care of the COVID patients appropriately, we were ramping down the other things that actually provided a service. And over the course of COVID, that caused us to get to a point where in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-two, the hospital lost, the health system lost over seventy million dollars. We actually, as a health system, have not made a profit since two thousand seventeen. However, the good news is, is that Premier Health is a reasonably conservative health system, and the cash flow has continued to move, and Atrium is in a reasonably good financial state. I have never come before you as a member of our team asking for some support, but there's something that's going on right now within our hospital system that we would like to ask for your support. As a part of the public safety of this community, we have a need to replace a helicopter that deals with and helps us with our CareFlight services. We are very blessed to have one of the centers in our market. The Atrium Base Center is based out of the Warren County Airport. Sometimes we get questions about why is it not at Middletown? It needs to have a clear environment to take off at any time, and the skydivers and other things actually prevent us from being able to do that. So the hangar is out at the Lebanon, Lebanon Address, but Middletown-based, Warren County Airport, just not too far from the hospital. That is usually the busiest of all the aircare helicopters within our region, and you're gonna hear a little bit about that from Amanda McClure, who is the vice president of Service Integration Emergency Trauma Institute for Premier Health. So again, tonight, we are extremely blessed that all four foundations within Premier Health, because these helicopters service the entire region, are working together to raise thirteen and a half million dollars to replace this needed helicopter for our region, and we are grateful for that. I am here to tell you that the foundations have grown significantly in what we can do, particularly the one here in Atrium, and I'm very pleased to tell you that the dollars that we were able to invest back into the building better and healthier communities, inspiring better health initiatives that we've had, was about one point six million dollars last year, and we are continuing to work to raise even more dollars to help our community become a healthier, better place. With that, I'm gonna introduce officially Amanda, who's gonna give you a little bit of a background on what CareFlight does. Some of you have heard some of this, and I appreciate your willingness to step forward and think about the support you may be able to provide for this service. Again, here's Amanda, and I'll, I'll come back and answer some questions in a few minutes. Amanda?
Is this, does this start the presentation? I still, okay. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's, it's a pleasure to be here. It's been really nice to learn about, a little more about the community and some of the other programs that you've been asked to sponsor, and helped me actually have a little bit of a centering moment, to think about, everyone's sort of in a place where they're asking for consideration. So I'm the vice president for Emergency and Trauma Services at Premier Health. I do have responsibility for our CareFlight program and a number of other programs within our system, but here, I'm, I'm here tonight to talk to you about CareFlight. So CareFlight has been around for a long time, but I'm here to introduce our team. So you see me, we have a program manager, Heather Irwin, who has been with our organization and in flight medicine for a greater than twenty years. Dr. Randy Marriott is our medical director. He has been a prominent, really leader in our regional EMS community for greater than forty years, and he has practiced clinically more than thirty years with our, our programs at Miami Valley Hospital in various roles. Anna Ludwig is our program manager, and then we have two outreach coordinators, Jess and Lori, who are boots on the ground, so they actively fly and take care of patients, but they also go out and do a lot of outreach in our communities, which I'm gonna talk about here in just another moment or two. So you all know that the hospital that's most based in this area is Atrium Medical Center. We are the only Level Three trauma program in Middletown and Warren County. In the last year, so two thousand twenty-four, we admitted almost fourteen thousand patients to our hospital for care. We had over twenty-six thousand emergency and trauma visits to the emergency department at Atrium Medical Center, and we had over eighty-two thousand outpatient visits to patients in this community serviced at that Atrium Medical Center. It's quite busy. We're very thankful to be a part of the community and very proud of the care that we provide. Our team with CareFlight is pretty phenomenal, so we have about a hundred nurses, paramedics, communication specialists, and leaders who receive rigorous training to provide the highest level of care to the most critical of patients. On our aircraft, you will find a pilot and either two nurses or a nurse and a paramedic. Paramedics were just added to our flight lines last year, we're really excited to have them as part of our flight crews, and they are very excited to be able to get in the air. That's newer for our program, not new in the industry, in fact, it's, it's closer to being an industry standard than what we were operating at before, so we're really thankful for our leadership in growing the, the paramedics on the flight line. We also have mobile intensive care units, so these are our ground units. To the outside, if you didn't know, you would think they were a regular ambulance, except they have MICU painted on the back, which does stand for Mobile Intensive Care Unit. We use those to transport the most critical of patients, even in times when we can't fly. So you'll find on those rigs a driver and either two nurses, or again, a nurse and a paramedic. We do that because the scope of the nurse and the paramedic is a little bit different, and we wanna make sure that we can provide the highest level of intervention that that patient might need before we can get them to the hospital for the care from the physician So we teach, we're out in the community, and these are some photos from some opportunities that we've had to partner with EMS agencies and with schools. You might see us doing our Drive Smart programs around the prom season, where we really seek to show and demonstrate to students in a, a real-life sort of fashion by mock crash, what might happen based on some choices that they might choose, or hopefully don't choose to make, when they're out having a good time and celebrating. We also do landing zone training with our local EMS agencies. We're not the only program in the area, right? UC also has an air program, and we have a responsibility, though, to work with EMS agencies to make sure that when we are responding to a scene that they're calling us to, that they know how to set up that landing zone in a way that keeps everyone safe, that keeps us free of, of any kind of debris on the ground, far enough away from the scene that we're not gonna bring additional turmoil or stress to that scene. So that's a lot of the outreach that we're doing out in the community and some of what you see in these photos here. We innovate. I've heard COVID in every presentation tonight, and I know Mike said it before. COVID was a pretty stressful time for all of us. We were one of the first programs in the state to transport, actually, I think we transported our first COVID-positive patient in March of two thousand twenty. So that was actually probably right along the same time that the soccer tournament unfortunately had to get canceled. It was a time of uncertainty, fear, and some pretty sick patients, and we had to, to come up with new ways to be able to do our work in a way that kept our patients safe, but also kept our employees safe. So there in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a picture of a mask that is special-made, that we did a lot of research on, to make sure that when our crews were wearing their flight helmets, when they're flying, that it's not disrupting the fit of their respirator and putting them at risk of catching an illness from the patients that they are transporting. We didn't have this in the beginning, we found quickly that the masks weren't fitting right, and so we had to innovate to come up with the best practice solution, and worked quickly to get our crews outfitted with that supply. We also, in the lower-left-hand corner, have the ability, this is not a real patient, to transport the sickest of the sick patients in what's called a prone position. So a prone position is when someone is having significant trouble breathing or some sort of cardiovascular compromise, and we put them in that position that is prone to take all of the weight of the chest off of those lungs, so that we're giving those lungs the best chance of expanding fully. We had to figure out how to transport patients by air in this position during COVID, and we did it. And we're really thankful that we were able to do that, and that's just due to the innovation and the, the skill and the will of our team. We're also the first program in the state of Ohio to carry whole blood. That is lifesaving. If any of you don't know, when there is a trauma and someone is bleeding, a lot of times, we can give them saline or some sort of a filler. By carrying whole blood in our, our aircraft, and we're actually gonna be pushing this out to our ground units as well, we're able to give patients that liquid gold. That could mean the difference between life and death. We innovated, again, by putting that into service, and are so thankful and proud to have that available for our patients. So another part of how we fulfill Premier Health's mission through CareFlight and the services that we offer. We started in nineteen eighty-three, and since then, we've transported more than ninety thousand patients. That number is, doesn't, it, it causes me to pause every time I hear it, and every time I think about the longevity of our program and the community. You can see here some different iterations of the different aircraft that we've had in the lifespan of our program, and, you know, our oldest aircraft at this point in time is, it pains me to say, is thirty-four years old, and for an aircraft, that's old. I don't wanna say thirty-four is old, but for an aircraft, it is. So we, we are, have been in a position, you heard Mike talk a little bit about our aircraft, and where we're really looking at replacing the oldest aircraft, so that we can continue to be in the community to provide the services that we wanna be here for. We do have three air bases and four ground bases, so air bases house the aircraft, ground bases house the MICUs. Our air bases are in Dart County and Versailles, we have an airbase in Urbana, and an airbase in Lebanon or Warren County. They're strategically positioned around our region, so that when we have a patient in need, we are more, more close to where they might be, to get to them quicker, so that then we can get their care started and get them to their final destination. So, since nineteen eighty-three, we've done more than, actually, at this point, more than ninety thousand transports. If you think about that number, it's enough patients to fill up Great American Ballpark twice, the Dayton, Wright State and Utter Center eight times, or UC's Arena seven and a half times. It's a lot of people and a lot of lives that we've been able to impact over the years of our program. Last year, we completed enough air transports to circle the earth two times. That's a lot, that's a lot of miles that we put in the, with our patients in the air, and we're really, again, thankful to be able to do that in, in a quick way with the air resources that we have. So this here is a heat map that really shows really, over the greater, the greater region where a lot of our business is, that red concentration in the middle is, is the, pretty much the Dayton area, but you can see it's, it's sort of just everywhere. There's a high concentration of volume in the southern market. So when we talk about the southern market and the northern market, we sort of use I-70 or just a little bit south of there to sort of divide our business. And what you can see is that in two thousand twenty-four, we did a little over thirty-two hundred transports from that southern market. I did double-check those facts, and they are true. That means of the five thousand transports that we did, about eighteen hundred of them were north of that kind of line in the center of our business, and thirty-two hundred were south. So that's a lot of volume down here that we're thankful to be able to support and continue to be present for. There's a breakdown there of our air and ground transportations, but really, I, I think the graphic speaks nicely for, for the work that we're doing in this community. So we are in a place where we had to make some decisions about what kind of aircraft to replace our aircraft with, because the Airbus manufacturer doesn't make the model of aircraft any longer that we have. That aircraft is really special and important to our mission, because it is what allows us to be able to transport two patients. It allows us to be able to carry the equipment for the patients that are being on a prone position, and some of those more invasive treatments. So we worked really hard and did a lot of research to understand what might best fit the needs and the mission of our program, and landed with this aircraft here, which is the Leonardo AW169. We're actually, as a system, purchasing, I think, two of these. One of them is purchased by the system, so that is this, this aircraft that you see here, and then the one that our foundation is working with us on will look identical to this, but this is not it. It's not quite in this shape or fashion yet. In the upper right-hand corner, it's a little bit difficult to see, but there's two visuals there, and that's really the cockpit of those aircraft, the one on the left being the newest aircraft, the one on the right being the older one, so it's really the difference probably between, you know, a lot of dials and knobs and switches. So it's really the difference probably between, you know, a lot of dials and knobs and switches, and then really a lot of advanced, what they call avionics, which is what the pilots use to visualize things in the air and, and allow us to have a bit more automation in some of the work that we're doing so that we're not messing with all the knobs and gears and, and we're leveraging technology as it's been advanced to really help our pilots fly in a safer way. Some of the features of this aircraft are pretty interesting to me. I think there's one that's called APU mode, which really allows us to keep everything sort of fired up, but not have that rotor turning. So that rotor turning presents some, some troubles for folks, you know, if you think about the, not wanting to get underneath of it and those sorts of things. But if we can keep everything running and kind of geared up, then we can take off faster when it's time to go get that, when it's time to leave that scene or leave with that patient. You heard me talk a little bit about advanced avionics. There's some low pilot workload features that we have here so that we're really taking a lot of that workload off of the pilot to be able to focus on the task at hand and using technology, like I said, to, to make that pilot's job a little easier and keep us safer while we're in the air. We'll also have some improved technology to quickly diagnose and correct mechanical issues. Instead of taking everything apart and figuring out what part is broken, we'll have the ability to sort of plug in, plug into a port, and, and they'll be able to do some advanced diagnostics on the, on the aircraft. So a lot of advancements that will allow us to be in service more often and on a more dependable place than the aircraft that we have right now that are sort of at end-of-life. And really thankful to be able to introduce the one, actually, that the foundation is, sponsoring for us, to our Warren County airbase. So that will be the primary base for that aircraft. We're really excited about that. So you heard me talk a little bit about some of the features. Here's another visual of the cockpit. This, this aircraft will also allow us to maintain an extended range. So one of the things that is a nuance of air traffic, travel, that you may not know if you're not a pilot, I didn't know this because I'm a nurse by background, is that we have to take into account the total weight of whatever it is that we're transporting, which includes fuel. And there are limitations for certain aircraft on the amount of total weight that they can have. This particular aircraft allows us to carry enough fuel to get us there and back for 90% of our missions without having to worry about, and we're talking 150 miles away potentially. So that really was something that was important to us, to not create interruptions or have to make our teams pause to think about refueling or do that calculation of this patient might, we have to offload some piece of equipment because we're over our weight limit or that sort of a thing. So we really went with what met our mission profile most of the time and allows us to continue to, to fill out the operations that we need with, with speeds up to 200 miles an hour. So that's, that's pretty cool and will allow us to keep the, the title of the most advanced air ambulance in the region above and beyond what you'll find in any other program. Again, we have the space that we need inside the cockpit to allow the, or inside the, really the cabin, to allow the, the team to perform the care that they need to perform on those So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Thank you for that background, Amanda. One of the things that we can't share, and it's all due to HIPAA regulations, is giving you a list of patients that have been handled through Atrium in the southern market. I know that in his role previously as fire chief, Paul Ollie has seen a lot of the uses of the aircraft that has actually saved a lot of our neighbors' lives. Having the connection to Miami Valley Hospital with Atrium is extremely helpful, having a Level I Quaternary Care Hospital with the trauma services it has and has helped us save a lot of lives. So having this air care service in our market is something that has been a true blessing to our region. The ability to work with all the fire, EMS, and first responders has been something that's been a real asset to this area, and we want to be able to continue that. How it helps Middletown and our surrounding region, there's been an awful lot of patients that have been picked up along accidents that have been along I-75. We have our, our neighbors and colleagues that come in with critical illnesses or circumstances that need to have transportation to another facility. We're able to get them there. There's an awful lot of lives, and I guarantee you that if I brought the list to you, if I was able, you would know some of the people on the list. And so we are very happy that we have the service, and now we're trying to, that we can continue the service. And I am personally very grateful that we're partnering with these other four foundations, so it's not something that Atrium is being asked to raise 13 and a half million dollars. We're being asked to raise about three to three and a half million dollars of that. As a effort of public safety, this is the first time in my 19 years of being at the hospital that I'm coming before the city, asking for your consideration and support of helping to fund some of this with us. So we are asking our public citizens and others to help us with this effort. We've raised about a half a million dollars so far. We're going to keep raising money over the next few years for this, but we wanted to come to you as city council, asking for you to partner with us as a part of our public safety and the efforts that we put in around that. So in inspiring our better health, finding and creating healthier communities, we want Middletown to continue to be a leader. So I want to say thank you again for allowing us to come here and give this presentation, and I, we are certainly welcome to answer any questions that you have, and again, thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you both very much. Any questions or comments at this time from council?
Just a couple questions. Have there been other cities or townships or even at the county level been interested in partnering as well?
Actually, we're coming to Middletown first. This is where we're based out of, and, and we hope that that will be an opportunity to ask some of the other cities and counties in our region to participate as well. We do not, we're not looking for all public dollars, but we are looking for a public-private support for this effort.
Sure. Yeah, no, it just came to mind that, you know, this is a regional asset, so, you know, we could even set up something with even the county commissioners and, and, you know, I mean, I'd take it a step further. It's things like this that are a little bit frustrating when we look at what's going on in Columbus, when the state of Ohio is putting billions of dollars into the rainy day fund, and they're just sitting there. And then every time they, they hit, they hit the max on the rainy day fund, and they're like, oh, maybe we should lift that. And it's like, you know, there's, there's things, you know, right? So it's not an unfair ask of the city of Middletown, but it's a big ask, you know. So, but it's just one of those things where, you know, with Warren County, with some of their commissioners or even, you know, city of Lebanon, I, I'd like to see if, you know, we could not only help, but start that momentum to where it's like, hey, this is a regional asset. And it's important. I mean, I, you know, knock on wood, hopefully, nobody, you know, here tonight would ever need this asset, but it's something that's, that's critical, you know, not only to our community, but really, you know, around the nation and around the world. So just out of curiosity, I was wondering, but, okay. So I think the ask is $400,000?
We were asking for a consideration of $400,000, but the, and that doesn't have to be a one-time this year ask. It could be something if the city was able to give that over a period of time. We appreciate that consideration as well. But it also doesn't necessarily have to be $400,000, to be candid. We think that coming to our city first and asking for your support may have a halo effect with going to some of the other communities, and that's what you're describing.
Sure.
So if we go to any of the other communities and, and we don't have your support, I don't think we're going to have the same support we might be able to garner from them.
And how long is the, the fundraising period for this?
We're trying to do this in about a two-year period. And so we've already started. There was a quiet phase that got us to where we are today. We're asking on a daily basis for support for this. We're just starting to be more public about it as we approach the, the delivery of the aircraft, if we can get it in by sometime mid next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council at this time?
Yeah, just a comment. As I said at the original, the initial meeting, I can pretty much attest firsthand the, the value of the CareFlight program. Over my 32 years in the, in the fire service, I can tell you, I was on the scene of many accidents or, or situations where CareFlight made a huge difference. And outside of funding our police department or fire department, this, this would be a type of a long-term funding that I can tell you will save lives out in the community. And, and I think it's important for us to consider, I think this council's going to need some time to discuss over the next few weeks. The interesting thing is what, whatever number we, we land on could be spread out over several years, which is, is an important thing to think about. But I, I cannot say enough for the value of CareFlight and their ability to, to save lives. I mean, if, if, like I said, outside of our police department, outside of our fire department, I can tell you that this, that helicopter there saves lives, and it saves Middletonians' lives when you least expect it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you for such a wonderful presentation. I also agree that, you know, we need to take a look at what we can do. I appreciate you saying that we could do it over the next couple of years. That's very helpful information, and yeah, thank you so much for being here tonight.
I appreciate that, and I can't help but say how important the soccer program is and Middletown Art Center. And my experience in soccer was, my very first goal scored was for the other team. I got excited that I had the ball and shot it into the wrong net at Kaluga Park on the west side of Cincinnati. And some of my art projects, we took my daughter to Spain, and we were touring Picasso's museum, and she said, Dad, everything you do looks like this. And so maybe one day I'll be a famous artist, too. So we'll see how that works out. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
And I would like to maybe take a break.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make a comment that we might be able to look at TIF funding for this, so staff will investigate and get back to council on different ways we might be able to fund this.
Good idea.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Combs. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to take maybe like an eight-minute break at this point. We can come back at 7:23. To begin, if you could please take your seats.
Careful what you wish for.
Careful what you wish for.
It's time to go home.
We are ready to begin.
All right, sorry.
All right, thank you very much. We are back in session. And Ms. Combs?
Sure. So this is our final presentation under City Manager's report. So this is the request for qualifications for our town mall redevelopment.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Try to, there we go. I tried to keep this pretty brief, but essentially this presentation is to just kind of summarize and go over what we are looking for for the request for qualifications, the RFQ process that'll be coming out here this week for the town mall redevelopment. Kind of give you a little bit of an overview, recap of what we're kind of looking for. Essentially, what this RFQ process is entailing is we're attempting to find the opportunities, the developers, the partnerships, and the entities outside of the city, or, you know, potential developers inside the community that would like to partner with the city for the redevelopment of the property, and possibly in conjunction with some other properties around the city block there that's highlighted. So what you see on the map to your right in blue is what the city owns. What's in gray is kind of that whole city block. Point two, examine and explore the qualifications and financial wherewithal of the interested partners. So the reason this is an RFQ and not an RFP, we're really not looking for the granular details in this. We're trying to keep this very high level, really just looking for the qualifications and the experience of the developers to make sure that, you know, as we find the right private-public partnership, it's with the developer that's got the experience and the wherewithal to actually see this project at fruition. Last but not least, we're also looking to just determine the most qualified individual of all the submissions, which one we feel like could do the best job with the highest-quality product. The general format of this overall, the RFQ draft, I believe, was submitted out to council as a whole. We pretty much dive right into it with the property background, going into a brief history of the town mall Galleria, as well as what the city owns, conversations about the surrounding area. We dive into the community outreach. So what city management and staff have done with public outreach to the community and the citizens as a whole to see what they want. In the RFQ, we've even aggregated a little bit of the survey results. Those results are also in more granular detail available by request from the developer. We also have the development expectations. So what the city would like to see, what we'd like to kind of see in the formatting, as well as, you know, if there's any specific questions or nuances that we can answer ahead of time, we try to have that in the RFQ. We go into some additional development information specifically for the utility and the zoning. We dive into the submission details as to how we'd like to see the submission presented to the city, as well as the requirements in that submission, and then the optional site visit. I believe in this RFQ, the city of Middletown is not, it's not mandatory to do a site visit because we are accepting proposals or qualification requests that would either keep the building or demolish the building of what the city owns. So that area is pretty open-ended. And then the format of this RFQ also goes over the process and the resources we have available for any questions they might have. Just some additional, few more details about the RFQ. This is going to be open for 30 days. Hoping to get it out tomorrow, but if logistics don't work, it will be out this week. This will be posted on the city's bid view site, somewhere to where we put all the rest of our RFPs. If anyone would have some additional information and stuff, feel free to reach out to myself. It's on the RFQ, my contact information. And then additional marketing, we'll have it on the city website. I believe there will be a press release in conjunction with our communications manager, as well as putting out to our social media and then direct to developers. So we've been talking with some regional development partners in the area who have done similar development projects, redevelopment projects, mixed-use commercial opportunities, as well as already having a handful of development interests and entities who have just kind of been asking, you know, what's the city doing with the mall? What are the next steps? And having that interest. So we're keeping them, you know, apprised, and we'll be reaching out to making sure they're aware of when the RFQ comes out. So that's what I have. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schulte. Are there any questions or comments from council at this time? Nothing?
What will you actually bring back to council when you get all the, all the, let's say you get 50 developers submit stuff? What's the plan?
The plan following up from that is to essentially, a committee of staff will go through all of those proposals. We'll look through them to see what the qualifications are and stuff. I'm sure city management doesn't have a problem sharing those proposals back out. They'd be public information. But then the city would pretty much have, as we review and we kind of interview and look through those, identifying which developer we think would probably have the best match to what the city's vision would be, and then moving forward with some sort of pre-development agreement negotiation that would ultimately go before council for final approval.
I just want to make sure that we, that the city's vision takes, you know, it gives people who responded, it takes seriously what people responded in the surveys and stuff as, as part of what the plan of decision is. Because that's one thing we've seen. Well, we asked the people to give us input, and then we just totally ignored that. And I hope we, at the end of the day, we give what some of the feedback from the community is serious consideration of ultimately being what we decided to go with. Not exactly. I understand it won't be exactly, but, but we just need to be transparent in that and let the citizens know that they truly had a voice.
Yeah, absolutely. To that, and the survey results being as part of the RFQ submission, that kind of aggregate as to what we've talked about, you know, 75% of the RFQ, or the survey responses from the committee and community, we're looking for stuff, you know, family entertainment, retail, shopping, restaurants, and those experiences. That's something we've tried to work into to make sure that this is a commercial redevelopment, to make sure that we have those storefronts, retail-facing components, business-to-consumer that we can take into consideration.
Perfect.
I'm wondering if, you said something about a committee. And so I'm wondering if it's possible that some of the citizens can be on that committee. And not citizens that we all know, but maybe just the ones that no one knows. I mean, we picked the same people to do the same, to, to speak for the community. So I'm wondering if you can pick someone different, possibly to be on the committee to help with this.
Yeah, I think that's a decision ultimately by council as well city management as to what that committee composition would be made up of.
Right.
I don't see why that would be a problem, but at least look at some external stakeholders.
Ms. Combs, did you want to speak to that? It seems like you're amenable.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that as, as the proposals come in. And in the meantime, we can decide on what that committee could look like and report back.
That sounds great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time?
Are there?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm just digesting some of this. So there, I mean, there's, this is kind of what I did for many years, you know, writing contracts, color team proposals, stuff like that in the defense space. And I understand the precedent that, you know, a lot of other cities and townships have set forth with doing an RFQ versus an RFP process. It leaves it open, ended to where there could be typically what we would put, you know, open to any and all innovative solutions, right? So I like it. But what I'd like to iterate to everybody is when you look at the submittal and criteria for the evaluation, there's a couple of things in here that are going to be really important. It's one, you better, you better come to the table, because an RFQ is great. You're going to get developers that are going to just lob things over the fence, right? They're going to say, it could be this, it could be that, whatever, right? Put a, put a Buc-E's there. You could put the world's biggest Chick-fil-A there. But guys, this is reality. This is reality, okay? And I know we did a survey with citizens, but you have to understand these are private dollars. These are private dollars. Somebody, somebody else is writing the check for this. They know the market. So while we want to incorporate some of those things, oftentimes, you're not going to get it. You know, you're not going to get it all, or you may only get a small piece of it. But there's a couple of things in here, you know, that we have to make sure, and I know it's listed here, I'm just going to state it publicly. They have to have, they have to show proof, the ability to finance this, 100%. An RFQ process, you're going to get somebody from Alaska, it's like, I built all of this stuff, or, you know, somebody, somebody far away that's going to say, hey, you know, we're interested. And I'm not saying this because I doubt staff's ability at all. I'm just saying this that, you know, this is the reality, you know, here in the city. And I want people to understand that the RFQ process, like Councilman Lawley said, you could get 50 responses. I hope not, right? That's a nightmare. But within those, if you get 50 responses, probably only 10% are going to be what I would call legitimate or feasible, right? The other thing is timeline. You know, they, they're going to submit their own timeline. You know, red flags would be if somebody's going to say, hey, this is 20, you know, we'll put this on the forecast for 2028, you know, that kind of thing. We all know that, you know, this project right here is, is, needs to happen. It's, it's a sense of urgency. I think that's why this council prioritized going after this particular parcel of land. You know, with on the other side of the highway, what's going in. And I would just say that, that, you know, we're, we're in a race right now. I mean, the Millikan Road exit's going to, going to go in in a few years. Once, once that goes in, put it in stone, once the Millikan Road exit goes in, we're going to have to fight twice as hard for anything off of Exit 32. It doesn't matter if it's commercial, off of Union Road on some of that land. It doesn't matter if it's some of this mixed use. Right now, it's a sprint here in this city. We, we can't sit back on this. So what I'd like to see is some sort of prioritization given to the realistic timelines. Some of this will take a little bit of time, but me personally, I wouldn't entertain folks that are forecasting years out. It's not going to work. I don't want to see any doubt on financing. I know you know this, Jacob. I'm preaching to the choir. But I'm just saying, like, this is a reality, guys, in this city. Like, we all went out on a limb here to get this. Let's not mess it up and say, just because this developer came in and said, hey, we think we're going to be able to do a dog park and a trampoline park and all these things, and everybody get lost in the sauce. Like, this is reality. These are private dollars. This is the gateway to the city. And we have to make sure that we have legitimate development groups coming to play. So that's, that's just my soapbox. And I understand, like, we want to have stakeholders involved, but at the same time, reality has got to be a concept in this process. We cannot get lost with some frills. This is, this is, there's probably going to be, I would, I would go out on a limb to say, there's probably going to be some big-name developers that come in, and their, their responses might be way less sexy than some of the other ones because they understand the market, they understand the risks. They also understand that Gables and Burlington isn't part of the deal. That right there is the limiting factor. You know what I mean? So we can't get lost in somebody, you know, putting some, some tassels on one of their, one of their RFQ responses and saying, this is, this is phenomenal. It's not reality. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
I had a couple of questions. I was just curious, during the process, and this is, might be premature to ask, talk about Planet Fitness in here, they will be relocated, correct? And then they must stay part of this process. Is that correct? They will remain in that site? Is that correct?
With our continuing conversations and negotiations of Planet Fitness, yes. We're working to make sure that they still have a home at the site. We're currently their adjunct landlords after purchasing the mall. And we want to make sure that they still have a home on the potential redevelopment.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier that the public outreach could be made available by request. Is that the kind of thing that we could actually just put on the website so people could just see it?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
Yeah, so right now, there is basically a summary of it, just because there's names and things that we need to redact. So, but there is right now a summary of what was turned in as a part of the survey.
And where can people find it?
It's on, it's on the town mall redevelopment site on the city's webpage.
Under, is that its own little?
Oh, it's under residence, and then it'll be the town mall redevelopment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. And does that conclude our city manager?
Yes, that concludes that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. All right, well, wonderful. The next order of business on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda?
Okay, as the answer is no, Mrs. Skank, please present the consent agenda.
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from February, I'm sorry, January 7th and February 4th, 2025, to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. Board of Zoning Appeals, December 4th, 2024. Library Board of Trustees minutes from December 11th and 18th, 2024. And the Board of Health minutes from January 12th, 2025, to confirm the conditional appointments of Riley Webb to the position of dispatcher in the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, and Ricky Saunders to the position of co-specialist in the Community and Economic Development Department.
Thank you, Mrs. Skank. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second? It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Alali?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the motion agenda. We have two items this evening. Ms. Skank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
Item A is to accept the fiscal year '23 grant Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program funded through the U.S. Department of Justice, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $115,427.81.
Thank you very much. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
Sure. The city of Middletown will receive that amount from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services from June 1st, 2024 to May 31st, 2026 without matching funds. The program provides pathways to treatment and housing for the unsheltered. Funds will be allocated for education, marketing, expanded services, hygiene kits, and staff overtime.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve item A, to approve the Comprehensive Opioid Grant?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
No, I would just like to thank Middletown Police and HopeLine for everything that they, that they do out in the community. And this, this grant's probably extremely underrated. This is going to make a significant impact. So I'd just like to thank them all, everybody that's a partner in that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the, the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Alali?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item B on the motion agenda.
Item B is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with John Jurgensen Company to proceed with the 2025 ODOT Urban Paving Program in the amount of $1,558,000.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This project involves repaving a 1.4-mile section of State Route 122 Roosevelt Boulevard to the University Boulevard overpass in Jackson Lane. On February 12th, 2025, Jurgensen Company submitted the lowest bid at $1,558,000, which is 16% lower than the engineer's estimate. Funding will come from the Capital Improvements Fund, with ODOT reimbursing approximately 75% of the cost.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve item B to authorize the acting city manager to enter into a contract to proceed with the 2025 ODOT Urban Paving Project?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The only question I have is, we are stopping at Jackson Lane. Is there any plan to proceed from Jackson Lane on?
Sorry. This was decided by ODOT. However, another project is programmed for 2027 to pave Roosevelt State Route 122 from Jackson East to Grand Roosevelt Split.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Alali?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda. The next agenda item on the agenda is legislation. We have five items of legislation this evening. Assistant Law Director, Mr. Brody Conover, the legislation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First tonight is ordinance number O-2025-05, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $4,950,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition by the city of approximately 30 acres of real property along Union Road and State Route 122 for a multi-use development, demolition of existing structures in the design, engineering, and construction of public infrastructure, including but not limited to water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer utilities, roads, traffic signals, and controls, curbs, gutters, intersections, sidewalks, lighting, and related infrastructure, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, all in support of economic development and job creation within the city. This is a second reading.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
In 2024, the city issued 4.9 million in bond anticipation notes from the Renaissance Point Development. The proposed legislation would allow for the issuing of additional 4.95 million in bands to extend debt for one year in anticipation to long-term bonds. The financial impact is minimal, increasing debt by 50,000. If the City Council doesn't approve the legislation, alternative actions are needed to avoid default on bands due in April.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item two tonight is ordinance number O-2025-06, an ordinance approving the revised final development plan for the Atticus Project at the northwest corner of Market Avenue and Union Road. This is a second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
Sure. The developer is seeking an amendment to the previously approved planned development for the project located at Market Avenue and Union Road that proposes to remove the commercial uses, increase dwelling units, and alter building layouts. The request is considered a major change per the Middletown Development Code, so city council approval is required.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item three is ordinance number O-2025-07, an ordinance amending sections 1208.06, fences, walls, and hedges, and 1226.01, review and decision-making authorities of the Middletown Development Code included in the Middletown Codified Ordinances. This is a second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
Yes. So, staff recommends removing the provision that permits fences up to 10 feet tall in residential districts. This aims to resolve inconsistency in the Middletown Development Code. Following the amendment, the code will only allow up to 6 feet high in residential areas. The planning commission voted unanimously in favor of the amendment. However, applicants can still request a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for taller fences in both the side and rear yards.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Was this another one that Claire caught, just kind of going through?
Yeah, it's one of the, another inconsistency that she caught to fix.
I swear she's making commissions on these.
She's doing a great job.
Excellent job, Ms. Fudders. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item four tonight is ordinance number O-2025-08, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a payment to Benchmark Land Management LLC for an emergency sewer repair on Crawford Street and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Combs, the staff report, please.
A section of the sewer collapsed on December 10th, 2024. Originally, 30 feet were to be replaced, but after excavation, 91 were needed. The total cost is $113,217.20. Funds are appropriated in the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund. This is emergency legislation because we need to pay for the completed work. The contractor's invoice was delayed due to email issues, which caused it to go to our spam.
Thank you very much. And is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item five tonight is resolution number R-2025-03, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2025, and declaring an emergency. This is for the police grant fund.
Thank you very much. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The Middletown Division of Police requests a supplemental appropriation of $76,330 to utilize grant funds from 2024 Ohio Recovery Foundation Grant. This funding will be used to purchase an all-terrain vehicle and pickup truck to transport individuals to treatment facilities. The first payment was $36,256.75, which was received on December 31, 2024. And these grant funds have been deposited into the police grant fund, resulting in no financial impact for the City of Middletown. This legislation is emergency because the city requires this appropriation to access those grant funds.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. And again, this is an emergency, so may I please have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, thank you very much. And is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. And Mr. Conover, the last item I misspoke, the last item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last tonight is resolution number R-2025-04, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2025. This is for the general fund, and it is a first reading.
Thank you very much. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This report requests $1,715.62 for the Middletown Division of Fires, Fire Prevention and Training Budget to replace the deteriorating safety house, which has educated children for 26 years. The funds will come from its upcoming auction sale. Without relocation, the division would need to use existing budget funds. There is no financial impact on the city as the sale, the funds were already collected.
Thank you. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed. This concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business? Mr. Horn?
Couple things for Ms. Combs. Under unfinished business, where are we at on the Bonnie Vance bench in Miami Park?
Sure. So, the staff has finalized the bench designs and styles. We're currently working with the family to determine what kind of verbiage and what kind of style bench they would like, and what placement would be in Miami Park. We're trying to nail that down here in the next couple weeks and get the bench ordered.
Okay. Next one, where are we at on the community center?
So, the community center construction project's on schedule and within budget. Interior renovation should finish up in about 30 days, and the steel is being installed for the new gym. The underground work for the gym addition is complete, and foundation slabs will be poured once temperatures exceed 40 degrees. We are currently a month ahead of schedule and aim to finish by Halloween.
Okay. Last, how has the winter, since we've had a very harsh winter so far in January and February, how does that, how's that affected the excavation on Renaissance Point?
Sure. So, construction at Renaissance is on schedule with a completion date at the end of May. Two potential delays are slow spring warming effect, pavement work, and the relocation of the electric poles by Duke for the widening of State Route 122. The worst-case scenario is we might push to mid-June.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other unfinished business from council?
I also would like to talk about the bench. Would it be, is that available to mothers that, grandmothers that raise their children's children? Is this something that we all will be able to put benches inside the park?
We could certainly talk about which families.
Right. As I spoke of Darren Brown, his grandmother raised him, and how he returns to Middletown yearly, providing a ice cream social essay contest for the children at Rosa Parks Schools. It would be nice if we could put Helen Brown inside of that park also. I think it would be nice if we put many grandmothers in the park, because we have a lot of people in Middletown that has raised their children, their children's children. So, that, I think that would be a great idea.
So, Mrs. Carter, are you, the reason, the specific of the Miami Park is he lived on McKinley, and that's where his grandmother lived. Now, do you want the, your, the benches that you're requesting, or bench that you're requesting, do you want that in Oakland Park? Do you want that in Douglas Park? Or do you want it at Rosa Parks School? I mean, these, these are just, the reason why I brought this up was, number one, we should feel good that he came from our city, but also that, and just as, as a grandma you're speaking about, a lot of times, people have to raise their children's children. And all this is is just, is a memorial to say, to help people understand, when you're going through difficult times, when your child is going through a difficult time and you're having to raise your children's children, that there's a, there's hope for the future. So, I don't know if we want to line Miami Park, because that has a specific, a special place for the Vance family, but if you're saying, hey, I have this person that comes back every year, is, does, does the great things, and his grandmother raised him, well, what park did he go to that, that gives him a great memory?
Well, I thought we were going to make Miami Park the grandmother's park. I didn't know it was just for a specific.
No, no. Well, I'm saying is, is sometimes people, I lived in Queen Street, so my park was crossing dangerous roads, but Goldman Park, that's where I played and everything else, or Sherman, where my school was. So, I'm just saying, we can make Miami Park the memorial park for all grandmas.
Yes.
But it might be a situation where that means people have to travel to it versus the park in your neighborhood. That's one thing I love about Middletown, is we have parks in the majority of our neighborhoods, which is, which is awesome, which is kind of rare, for like bigger, newer cities that just have parks where they want people to go. So, I, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, for those people to have to travel versus having the, having a bench in the park in their neighborhood. That's all.
I'm, I'm thinking of the community in general. Make it Miami Park, the grandma's park, and put benches in there for children who were raised by their grandparents, who return every year, not just all of a sudden they return, but every year, Darren has returned to Middletown to contribute. So, if we make that park grandmother's park, then we, there's several people that they can put their grandmother's bench inside that park also. And so, we would have a grandma's park.
Could I work with you to get their contact information?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. And it sounds like this is just really an inspiration for all grandparents and even extended family everywhere, that we come together and we raise the children.
Right.
Just saying, my grandmother lived on McKinley, and that was park I went to as well. So, that's, I just wanted to say that now, though.
Right.
But, okay, any other unfinished business, or I'm sorry, yes, unfinished business? Nope. Hearing none, we will continue. Any news business from council? That's the next item on the agenda, any new business? Okay, and I think that's it for me as well. So, hearing none, this concludes our regular city council meeting for Middletown, Ohio, Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 7:58 PM. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in these chambers for our next regular city council.